...is November 26th and we are meeting in the Barnes Building. Would you please stand and join me in a luncheon? I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to your beloved and righteous hands, one nation, under thy, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. DeAngelis.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Suhar.
Here.
Mr. DeAngelis.
Here.
I'll introduce the person.
First, we'll ask if there's any public participation relative to the agenda. Seeing unmuted on that, we have a presentation. And Mr. Bell, do you want to make some comments about that?
Sure do. Really happy to have the Shoreview team with us this evening. You are going to give us, the team will give us a presentation on their academic achievement and some of the things that are going on at Shoreview. But I just want to kind of set the context first. One of the things that we would be doing in our special board meetings is giving all of the schools an opportunity to highlight some of their achievements and be able to share with the board and the public some of the things that are going on in each one of the schools. And so I'm happy to have the principal and the team here tonight to talk about some of the really neat things that are going on at Shoreview. We're very excited about the opportunities for our students and the opportunities that they have with the staff. And so, without any further ado, I want to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent John Swexer, who is the principal and who will then introduce the team.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Bore gives me great pleasure this evening to present Mary Thomas, Principal of Shoreview Elementary, who will be leading the Shoreview Elementary Improvement Presentation tonight. She will be accompanied in the presentation by Amy Rosenbaum, Literacy Coach, and Erin Norton, our Math Coach. Mary, it's all yours.
Thank you. We are excited to be here tonight. I'd like to introduce other members of our school leadership team. Stephanie Boca, our Assistant Principal, Kathy Rich, fifth grade teacher, and Carrie Fortcamp, second grade teacher. So we thank you for having us here tonight. We'd like to share our school improvement plan for the 12-13 school year for Shoreview Elementary. We have broken our program into three sections: climate, math, and reading. And so I will begin with our climate. And as you know, we are a brand-new elementary school. So we have chosen to, this year, begin collecting our baseline data. We have not set goals with numbers for our climate in terms of reducing suspension or anything of that nature, because what we want to do is collect the data. We do not want to use data from previous elementary schools. So we are going to begin with our Shoreview pledge. These are some of our fifth-grade students.
At Shoreview Elementary School, I will be responsible, I will be responsible, and I will follow the goal and reward.
So our mission and our vision for Shoreview Elementary has been developed through input from our teachers. We began at our first staff meeting back in August. We developed our mission and our mission statement, and we worked throughout the next several weeks within staff meetings and with time with the teachers to really develop a mission and a vision statement that ties in nicely with the district vision and mission statements. And basically, what came out of everyone's comments was that we want to teach our children to think. Those critical thinking skills are so incredibly important, and we want them to become productive members of society. We know that we owe a great deal to the community for these beautiful new schools that we have, and we want our students to be able to give back to the community. We know that our 21st century skills are going to be extremely important for our students, so we want to make sure that we tie that in with our vision statement. As I mentioned with the climate, we did not want to use Upson or Memorial Data where most of our students came from, because we wanted to develop our own climate. We wanted to develop our own baseline data as the year goes on. But what we knew we needed to do was to develop a building climate committee to make sure that we had a voice for our staff, that we had a voice for some of the concerns that were not only coming from the students, but also possibly from parents and from our staff members. So the purpose of our building climate committee is to discuss building concerns while looking at building data. We brainstorm solutions and then report out at staff meetings on what we plan to do. We have had the opportunity to meet a couple of times this year, and the idea is to meet periodically and to kind of take out small chunks and move from there. As far as our positive behavior supports, we have responsive classrooms where we have our, we have nearly 75% of our classroom teachers trained in responsive classrooms. We pass out golden tickets to the students, and these are tickets that they earn in common areas. And maybe their teacher that gives them to them, but primarily it's teachers from other parts of the building or other staff members that, you know, hand the tickets to children for doing what is expected of them. We have weekly prize drawings where the students' names are called on Friday afternoon, and they earn little trinkets just to recognize their positive choices. And we have monthly principals' luncheons that we have nine students K through two and nine students K, or three through five, who have a lunch with the principal on the first Friday of every month. At the end of the year, we will also have our yearly drawing where there's larger prizes, and the students kind of choose if they want to participate in weekly, monthly, or a yearly drawing. Our building-wide expectations, we have posters throughout the building. The children are constantly reminded of what's expected in their behavior, not only through modeling of the teacher, but also the posters that they see throughout the building. Expectations assemblies are done. We had one at the beginning of the year. There will be one after the winter break, and then another one in the spring. And again, like I said, the posters that they see throughout the building. We also have a monthly lunch staff meeting that either myself or Mrs. Boca are present at, and we feel that it's so important to include our lunch staff. They spend an hour a day with our children, so we want to make sure that the language that we're using in the classroom and throughout the building is being reiterated also during the lunchtime. As we look towards the future, we have begun the process of a check-in-checkout system where we have identified staff members who are available, have a little more flexible schedule than, say, a general ed classroom teacher, to work with those students who may have trouble, maybe, you know, kind of on the edge of suspensions or multiple suspensions, and we want to make sure that those students have a trusted adult that they can check in and check out with throughout the day, whether it's once, twice, or maybe even three times a day. We are expanding our onsite counseling. We have been using Nancy Lowery and Associates as they come into our building, and they provide counseling for our students. It isn't outside agency, but they use our building. And I am meeting with Nancy Lowery this week to expand on that, because then we see that the number of students that want to participate is growing. Our Shoreview pledge is important to us. Our goal is for all of our children by the end of the year to be able to recite that. What do we expect from you at Shoreview? Be able to recite the short pledge that you heard at the beginning of the presentation. Our bullying assemblies are important. We've been fortunate enough to have one already this year, and we hope to have another one in the late winter, early spring, to remind our students about the behaviors that we expect, but if they feel like they are being bullied, what they can do about it and how they can go about solving, helping to solve the problem. And I mentioned that so many of our classroom teachers are trained in responsive classrooms, but all of our classroom teachers, trained or not, are using some form of morning meeting. And the expectation is to use that morning meeting to reflect on the classroom climate. What can we do as a classroom to develop a stronger community? And so we are working to make sure that that continues to happen and that those problems are addressed and that the classroom teacher has some input on that. So I am going to turn it over to Erin Norton, our Math Coach.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. When students enter our schools in kindergarten, they often come to us with deficiencies in number sense, including basic skills such as counting and number recognition. Furthermore, they really struggle with their basic fact knowledge. And without that basic fact fluency, a foundation in that, they're going to struggle throughout mathematics in school. And that leads us to our goal for Shoreview. By January 2013, we will reduce the number of students in the red from the fall AIMS Web Benchmark by 20%, as measured by the Winter AIMS Web Math Computation. So they all took a math computation assessment in the fall, and this is an example of one of the pyramids generated for one grade level, but it happens to be very representative of actually most of the grade levels. So the red shows the students that are below target, the yellow near target, and the green at target. So we chose 20%. We didn't choose 10%, because we thought that wouldn't make a big enough impact. And we chose, we wouldn't choose 30%, because we have to keep in mind that not only are we trying to raise students out of the red into at least the yellow, we need to keep kids that may be in the yellow from slipping back into the red. To achieve this goal, one of the things we plan, that we are doing, is incorporating number talks at least three times per week in our K through five classrooms. Number talks are an excellent way to help develop number sense and address some weaknesses that the students might have. Log every student in grades one through five onto First in Math. If you're not familiar with First in Math, it's an online math resource that offers very comprehensive content from simple addition all the way up to complex algebra. Our students use it mainly for math fact practice. It's very engaging. It gives immediate feedback, and so it's an excellent resource. Using intervention enrichment time to differentiate instruction. This is intervention enrichment time. There's 45 minutes every day of the week put into the schedule of all K through five teachers this year, and it's designed for them to use, it's designed so that they have time to address things outside of their math and reading class time, and it's to intervene or enrich, depending on the needs of their students. And we at Shoreview, all the grade levels are using at least some of those days to address math. And they will either address weaknesses that they have on certain skills or to maybe address a lack of prerequisite skills that they need in order to succeed at the grade level they're at. We also have some grade levels who have mixed groups during that time. What I mean by that, they will get together as a team, grade-level team, and take the kids and divide based on the need they have. Maybe each teacher will take a different concept based on an assessment that students had taken, and then they would, it didn't matter if they were your student or not, if they were a fifth-grade student during that time. So that's a, we found that's a great way to differentiate instruction and meet the kids' needs. Monitoring individual student growth and basic fact knowledge. As I said, basic fact knowledge is really critical in order to be successful in mathematics moving forward. So every grade level has some way of addressing the needs of the basic facts and monitoring their students' growth of their basic facts. And I'm going to, we'll take a look at a couple of examples of how they're monitoring that in a minute or two. I'm going professional development in math for content knowledge for the teachers, actually, and that's offered during the professional development days district-wide, as well as during our weekly collaboration meetings. There's often times where I'm able, as the math coach, to offer some professional development. And Do the Math Intervention, Do the Math is an excellent intervention program that we have purchased this year that is designed to address your biggest strugglers. I'm seeing a group of third, fourth, and fifth-grade students, which would be the lowest achieving in the, the lowest achieving on grade level as determined by that AIMS Web Math Computation. And on this next slide, you can see, this is the result as of last Tuesday with the progress monitoring with those students that I see, that right now about 67% of them are either near or above their target goal. Here are, this is an example of one of our grade levels' monitoring system for their facts. This is our fourth grade, actually, some of our fourth-grade teachers, and they give them a fact test on addition, and they look at the students' results and determine what areas they might need. For example, they might see, oh, they can't seem to add their sevens and their eights. They'll work on strategies with the students on that, and then they give them another assessment to see if they've improved. If they become a master, they get their name up there and the date that they mastered it, and they move on to subtraction and so forth, then to multiplication, then division, then mixed practice. That's one example, one of our grade levels. Second grade at my building, they all gave, they decided to strategically monitor their students' progress for facts using AIMS Web, and this way they would know where their students are at prior to the winter benchmark. This is an example of a graph for one of the second-grade classrooms. The yellow over there on the right shows you how per group, this teacher's group, has moved from the yellow on the left, and the blue dot shows this, a specific student's progress, from where they were, where they were in September to where they are now. So this shows at a quick glance how her class has moved and they've moved up. And it also gives some information when they use this strategic monitoring to show how far away students are from the goal that's in January prior to it being too late, because you're already there. So it gives them an opportunity to look at a student that hasn't made any progress in September, even if they're a higher achieving student, or the student that hasn't made any progress and they're a lower achieving student, just who needs a little more intensive work and helps them keep track of that on the way. In the future, we're having, we're going to have after-school tutoring of targeted students using Do the Math. So we've already chosen some students that we are going to send letters out to offer that to. And also, I'll be sharing the advantage of this AIMS Web strategic monitoring that the second-grade teachers use with some other grade levels, and hopefully they'll choose to use that as well. A lending library of math resources. We have a lot of valuable math manipulatives and resources at Shoreview, and the goal is to have them used in the classroom so that the students can benefit from them. And so we plan to have a math, an inventory list and checkout system so that the teachers can use those. And then classroom support from myself as the coach. I'm going to pass on now to Amy Rosenbaum, our Literacy Coach.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Like math, we also, in reading, our goal is to reduce the number of students in the red by 20%. This will be determined at the benchmarking that we'll do in January with AIMS Web, and we will see how we progress to that goal. When benchmarking, we are looking at early literacy measures for kindergarten and first grade, and that entails the phonemic segmentation, the letter sound, letter name, and nonsense words. And for the rest, the other grade levels, second through fifth, they're using the oral reading fluency. After benchmarking, to achieve our goal, we have identified the students that have fallen below the 25th percentile. And based on the need, those students will be receiving either intervention service outside the classroom and/or inside the classroom. We refer to these groups often as Tier Two and Tier One strugglers. Tier Two strugglers are those that will receive services outside the classroom in an intervention group. The students are monitored weekly to assess progress through the AIMS Web. Monitoring students include the progress monitoring that's done weekly, weekly fresh readings and/or running records, weekly tests, and developmental reading assessments, the DRAs, which are given every three weeks during what we call a customized week. We have a slide of a young man, Isaac Carter, who is, Isaac is a fourth grader at Shoreview, and he is going to explain and show you what fluency means to him and how fluency is being monitored in his classroom.
And then we got to do better than our poor reading. Ninety-two, put my high review on the first day, and then I came back on Friday, and then I got 103. Fluency is when you work out for reading smoothly and having the ability to watch for like periods and comments and stuff like that, usually expression when you read for like question intentions and question marks and. My highest score ever was 119. I want you to get that feeling that like, that like you beat that score like so fast. It's like doing, like time is passing so fast. Because man, I never thought I could beat that fast.
The students really, when they graph and take the interest in graphing on their own, it's really a, something that they strive to beat each week. This graph shows all four elementary schools and the number of students demonstrating improvement after several weeks of intervention outside the classroom. We're very proud of the success of our tier students, as demonstrated on the graph. Presently, we serve 107 students, whom are Tier Two students, and 73% are achieving their set goal. During our weekly collaboration meetings, we examine upcoming tests, we examine student writing, and when we look at tests or writing, we are constantly looking at ways that we can better our strategy skills needed to achieve our goals. So we look at best practices, how we can make things different, make things better. When we, based on any results of any data that we bring to collaboration, we identify strengths and obstacles. And from the obstacles, we go into a five-step process where we set new goals based on those obstacles that were set. We provide coaching support, and it's a wonderful opportunity for the brainstorming amongst the professionals at that grade level. In the future, we are present, oh, well, in the future, we will be working very closely with John Carroll with the Literacy Cooperative, and they will be working with our kindergarten students. And presently, they, each kindergartner was assessed one-on-one, and then they will be chosen to work with a particular person from John Carroll. We also have the Little Result Tutors, and they are doing small group tutoring with enrichment during that IE time that Erin had talked about. And we highlight our writing samples in the hallways of the school so that the children are aware and the parents and any visitors into our building. And we would like to thank you for your time, and we look forward to a bright future at Shoreview Elementary. Thank you.
Ask the board if they have any questions. Erin, when you were talking about achieving your goals, one of your first bullet points was incorporate number talks. Could you just describe how number talks are, maybe, an example?
Okay, a number talk is just a very quick five-to, five-to-10-minute way to start off a math class. Or it can be done anytime that you find the time to put it in. But where you can give them, for example, say, you're going to give three plus six plus seven plus four, and it's written horizontally, and the students, it's done mentally, the students think of the answer, and then have to share strategies for how to get it. So basically, by having mental math and having shared strategies, there's so many benefits from that. Does that help?
No, excellent.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. The, and I'm not sure if this is directed necessarily at the Shoreview staff, as maybe it is our district leadership team. The intervention and enrichment period, is that going on? And I thought that was primarily a secondary strategy. Is that going on at all at the elementary school buildings? Okay, thank you. And could you provide a bit of an explanation, I'm on page six here, handout, I'm not sure what slide that might be, but what a tier student is, which was in the, who's after the, who's in the reading section?
Okay, so you're talking about.
Yeah, you're talking about Tier One and Tier Two, and just kind of an explanation, clarity on the difference between two, and what that, what a Tier One struggling student looks like and the difference between a Tier One struggling student and a Tier Two struggling.
The Tier Two struggling student would fall in the lower 25th percentile, and we go as high as we can to meet the needs by the number of tutors that we have available, which this year we have very many. However, once we reach the number of pockets that can be filled, then the Tier One strugglers are students that are in the classroom that may not be receiving services at this time, but the teacher has a very strong eye on those particular children, working closely with them in the classroom.
What are the characteristics of the Tier One and Tier Two students? In other words, we get 25%.
To the.
Just what are some of their characteristics? What does that student look like?
Reading below grade level by possibly what could be two to three years below grade level in this essence of kindergarten or first year, and those early literacy measures coming in without any letter ID, letter sound correspondence. And then when you're looking at the oral fluency, you're looking at a child that is definitely very, very below grade level many years. Could be anywhere from two to four years below grade level.
And that's Tier Two.
Tier Two. Now Tier One strugglers may definitely, they're definitely performing below grade level, but not that big of a gap.
What about the Tier Three students?
The Tier Three students are identified, are special ed, identified students in that tier.
Are they the special ed that are in the red?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
And a Tier Three is different than, you know, the pyramid that you saw with our red.
And so, just so the board and the public understand, Tier Three students, services would be different in the fact that they may have some special needs and maybe some restrictions based off of the IP and based off of what needs to occur at that point, which would be different than a traditional student that would not fall in that role.
Correct.
All right, so to add some further clarification. All right, so to add some further clarification. So I think if I remember the slide, the Shoreview slide, it was one hundred and seven tier students?
Tier two students that are being serviced outside the classroom in the intervention group, working with a tutor and/or, I also have students with, in my, I have tier two strugglers as well. But, so they're working in three to four students per one adult. So they're small group instruction, not one-on-one.
Any questions?
I have a question for Mrs. Thomas. In your building climate committee, who participates more?
Our building climate committee was voluntary. We asked teachers to sign up. What we were looking for was one teacher from each grade level, and then one from each specialist area. And we did have people fill in all those positions. We have yet to have everyone at the table for a meeting just because of scheduling conflicts, but we do have representation from each grade level and then the specialist areas.
Have you considered adding in like the cafeteria workers, media people, or something like that?
Yes, the problem that we have is our meetings are held after school, and so they're gone at that time. But like Mrs. Volka and I have both attended, we've kind of been trading off with their monthly lunch staff meetings, and we bring their concerns so that they do have a voice at the table, even though no one might be present at the meeting.
Okay, I have a question. Want to get some more questions? When you talk about seventy-five percent of your teachers are trained in responsive classroom, what are the plans to get the other twenty-five percent trained?
Well, the idea, we still, as a district, we've still committed to responsive classroom. And there's, is, up until now, there's still the summer training. There has been talk, I don't know where we are in terms of having things done throughout the school year. But the idea is to, you know, continue to push it, and the expectation is that, is that teachers use the techniques of responsive classroom so the training will only help them. Unfortunately, we can't force anyone to take the training, but we do continue to encourage people to attend the training and to be a part of some refreshers we often do then. You know, throughout the year, we bring in some techniques at staff meetings and things like that so that people are definitely aware of them.
Can I just add something, I'm sure that I did a very good job in responding to the question. The other part of that, in that equation, when it's not made, sorry, what happens is that when you know it's effective, it makes it very difficult for people in the building to not want to do that because they know that it's something that will help students to be successful. So as Mrs. Thomas stated, we're encouraging staff members to be a part of that. I think that based off of the success that they're having, we encourage the rest of them to want to be involved. So we look for just about the entire staff to be a part of it. There are some pitfalls that we have to work through, but the idea is to have anybody be a part of that so we can help that, to help change our behavior and move things in a positive direction.
Okay, Mrs. Thomas, you mentioned that you have, you've decided to go with your own baseline. Is your IRM number, the old UPSN number?
Yes.
Okay, so the state's going to be looking at your comparison and scoring to those old numbers.
And as, as far as building climate goes, what, what I have experienced is that people telling me what a difference it is. And at this point, when we've looked kind of quickly, I should say, at the, at the old UPSN data, we have exceeded any expectations that we would put. But it's a totally different staff. It's so, so we, in terms of setting that, those goals, we have exceeded in, in terms of, you know, reduction at this point in the school year. So we want to, you know, obviously maintain that, but we want to start a fresh baseline for building goals for the current staff that we have.
I understand, I just know that the comparison is going to be.
Okay.
Who gets the counseling that you talked about, and how are they chosen?
This, it's a letter that's sent out to every student at the beginning of the year, and it is, the parents sign up for it, and they're, you know, they take insurance, they, they take Medicaid, and they take private pay. So the parents have to arrange a meeting prior to a counseling session with the counselor and make all of those arrangements. We just, literally just provide the space for them to use.
I think that's great, why you two get some counseling, you know, that you know is going to happen for some of them. You kind of answered this on the math goal, because my thing was whether twenty percent was reasonable. And, you know, I know we have to push, so, you know, I'm kind of glad to see that you're stretching a little bit. How, what are you using for the differentiated instruction in math?
What are different teachers using, or?
Well, I mean, one thing, it's when you, when you're going to do the interventions, obviously you can't teach them the same way that what they.
Right, well, one of the ways is how they have taken an assessment, and if they were in one teacher's classroom, and they looked at their results during collaboration and decided these are the students that didn't do so great on, say, word problems. And then another teacher might be the one then teaching them something. And we talk about different strategies and different ideas of what they could use to approach word problems. Or the kids that are still struggling with subtraction, we talk about ideas and specific ways we could teach it differently. Because obviously, we understand, if you already taught it, and they didn't do well, teach them the exact same way, yeah, it's going to be very successful. But it's always a discussion. Sometimes I give them ideas and resources, and sometimes they have great ideas themselves that they share, something that another teacher might have used, where this one classroom might have done really well on subtraction, so they'll share what they did, that the teachers might use that with their students.
Good collaboration then. When you're, I don't know if I said a question wrong, that was another thought, but. Oh, the slide that showed the math masters, and you said that was fourth grade? How long ago were those slides taken?
It was a couple of weeks ago.
It just seemed like there were so few on the subtraction one that's a concern, because that's all the fourth grade.
That was, that was one class, and it is in German that, but we're, you know, their basic fact knowledge is something we really need to push. And that's why we're making it one of our goals. And we really, more than previous years, we're really making a push to use different strategies and ways to monitor it, you know, the fluency, the fact stuff.
Well, I appreciate that, because that's something that I pushed when I was on the D O K. Because they needed to know that.
Right.
You can't do the math fast enough to complete the test if you don't have the facts.
Right.
And we're really one way to learn, and we're really.
Well, with the number talks and everything, we're really talking about approaching it in a different way than we approached it. We've done, just talked about it for the past couple of years since the math coaching has come along, but the rote memorization isn't going to get us, the way we all learned math is very different now. And I think getting the teachers on board with that, we've had a lot of success with that. And I think that you're really going to start seeing the difference in the scores.
And then in the enrichment, Miss Soskiter, coach, how are we rising the students in the grade to get to advanced and accelerated?
Well, one, I know for, I've been making a point to talk about those higher kids in collaboration meetings with the teachers, talking about how we have to, can't just leave them behind. We do have higher achieving students that need to be challenged, and that doesn't mean just more work. It means, could be on the same topic for math, but we might say they're doing word problems over again. It's a very common across grade level. But they might be, they might be able to do a two-step word problem, or the class is doing one-step word problem. Just sort of making it more of a challenge. Or for one thing we talked, we talked about this morning at our collaboration meeting, for the students that are proficient in division, or you have a lot of kids that are, then instead of just having them practice division problems, have them write some division word problems. Because you can't write a division word problem if you don't really understand what division means. So things like that, we do talk, we have discussions about that for math.
Yeah, I'd like to see them push it a little bit, because it's boring for them. And you'll lose them and lose our excitement. And we need to have more that are, are scoring up at the proficient, advanced levels. And it seemed like for a while, we were pushing those students to that point, so.
That's also like I was saying with that strategic monitoring, how if you had a student who had a thirty-three in September, which is a good score, but if they just took it in November and they still have thirty-three, that's a way to say, well, you know, they haven't grown. They're still above average, they're still going to score grades high, and it moves that at all. So, you know, sort of, that's a way to keep our eye on that as well.
How are you involving parents in trying to get the kids to achieve better and behave better?
Well, I can only speak personally for my own groups. I've sent a letter home to the parents that I work with, explaining that they're in this math intervention, and giving them my email address, and asking, you know, if they have any questions, they would contact me. That's just for my, I only see twelve students.
And the children's, and those giving the interventions have also sent letters home. I encourage them to call the parents if there are concerns, and talk to the teachers. And at the conferences, we were asked immediately to sit in at conferences, show that, you know, sending books home daily, encouraging the parents to listen to the child read, encouraging the children to read to the parents. And, and that's all through letter four.
Okay, we just, probably, you know, you could come to the, probably looking at, I think questions probably in the board, or in the entire building, because I think there are lots of things to do specifically in the building to deal with climate. And I know that parents have been involved, and so you might not speak to that with them.
Yeah, when we, when we have students that we've identified as, you know, struggling behaviorally, I know Mrs. Volka and myself have spent many, many phone calls, you know, talking to parents and, you know, explaining to them what we're seeing at school. And what I will say is that by and by, we, you know, we have a lot of support from the parents. And, and we frame everything in the sense that, you know, we want to do what's best for your child, not only today, but into the future. We've got them for a few years, you have them for the rest of your life. So we want to make sure that we can start to change behavior. And what we, with the check-in, check-out system, our, our plan is to get these children to the point where they have someone that they trust. They might not make the best choice every minute of every day, but if they do, they have a chance to, if they make a poor choice, they have a chance to get themselves back on track. And really making the parents aware of the fact that we are, we're investing human resources outside of your child's classroom teacher to, you know, improve their behavior so that they can become more productive, not only in school, but in the community. And, you know, making sure that the parents are aware of that. And, you know, I will say that they, they have been extremely supportive, and they, you know, they want to do what they can to help us. And, you know, when, when we explain to them the things that, that we're doing at school, and what are some of the things that you're doing at home, I think that that's, when the communication starts happening, that's when we start to see the changes happening.
Just, just want to add a couple of things. One of the things that we've talked about is looking at non-traditional ways of involving parents. I think, Mrs. Thomas, I like the check-in, check-out, which is a great, I mean, I think that's a great way of involving different people, because what happens a lot of times is that they may not necessarily connect with this one teacher, but with someone else who can look at things a little bit differently. It makes it a little bit easier for them to be able to connect, so that's just one, one thing. And then also throughout, as I was going through and talking to the community, we looked at how might we then look at involving parents in some different ways. So we're going to be having some communication and conversation with administrators about different ways that we can involve the community in schools. Because we know, and we realize that we've got to reach out, we've got to do more than just send invitations to be able to get people, you know, get them involved, and make them active and involved. So that's something that we're all going to, to make sure that we do. I do like how Shoreview is starting to look at different kinds of ways we involve our staff, but that is something certainly we're going to do.
Yeah, if you were sharing some of the strategies, if you haven't trained, might help the parents then deal with behaviors at home. Like not necessarily think along the same lines that you do as far as what to do for the student himself. If you can share that with them, that'll help make it easier and quicker. And thank you, I hope you did, you did a great job. Thank you.
Before we move on to, Madam Chair, just one thing I wanted to add, because we had a conversation we had. They mentioned the twenty percent, I meant to say that before they sat down, but just so the board knows, public knows, it's really about a hundred percent for us. We have minimum goals, and we want to meet those goals, but the idea is that we all are scared, and make sure that they're all doing what they need to do. So our, our ultimate goal is a hundred percent. While we have some, some targeted goals, we really want to be taken on. So I want to make sure that that was, and I thank the team for, for supporting, thank the staff for being on there. I know it's been a long day, I appreciate you being here tonight and the preparation I went into. So thank you very much for that. The second presentation that we have tonight is, the board has asked to give an update on our facilities. As you know, we opened four new elementaries, and are very, very proud of that. And so at this time, I'm going to ask Pat Higley, who is our business manager, to give us an update on where we stand with our facilities. And he's got some guests with him tonight that he's wanted to introduce to help us to be able to put in context where we are with our buildings, what our issues are, concerns, and moving forward, what that looks like. So at this time, Mr. Higley is already there. Go ahead and begin.
Appreciate the board giving us time tonight to, to report out. As Mr. Bell said, we have Pat Faran from PCS with us tonight to answer questions if need be. David Riley, our legal counsel, and Dennis Cap from the representative from the OSFC in attendance to, to help answer questions if need be at the end. Boy, it's, it's been quite a road getting to where we are now. There were, there were times along that road where we, we looked in the tunnel looking for the light. And we were telling them we weren't sure if it was the light or if it was the oncoming train. And I'm here tonight to report that finally, we, we do see the light at the end of this tunnel with regard to this project. So we're very happy about that. In just over thirteen months, we built four schools, sixty-eight thousand square feet per school. And we put the first brick in the ground, I think last August is what it was. And in September, we had four beautiful new schools. And looking back on how difficult it was, when you walk through these buildings every day and on a regular basis as we do, you see how, how much of an improvement and what a benefit these schools are to our district and to our students and our staff. And it's great to see how they're utilizing the technology and the space that has been afforded them by, by our community. The most pressing, pressing issue I think we have had, and we continue to have, is with our HVAC system, with our heating specifically. I've had it been tempered down a couple of times by the OSFC because of my impatience in getting this one hundred percent right. But in a project like this, it's, from what I understand, it's not uncommon to have these issues into the project. Especially in light of the fact how everything was kind of jammed together and consolidated because of some unforeseen circumstances, weather-related, and permits, and so many other things that took place at the beginning of this project. So instead of completing these buildings in July, we were faced with moving in over a regular day weekend. And that didn't allow for the technicians to, to test the HVAC systems in a way that they shouldn't. Didn't allow for the commissioning agents to go through and really give their seal approval. So, so what we have now is, is a bunch of contractors and commissioning agents. The state, Dennis has been out here with us, PCS, mechanical engineers, mechanical contractors, all going through these buildings, the temperature control guys. We had a meeting about two weeks ago, and all of us walked through all four school, well, three of the four school buildings to understand what the issues were. Again, I'm pleased to report that it seems like we've gotten a handle on, on these, these issues. There are some installation deficiencies that were involved, and the reason why we've, we've had some, some of the issues we had, and I apologize to the teachers who are here tonight. I know some of you guys have been real hot, some days are real cold, and I guess so. I thought we're working on it. But we expect in January, we should have all of these issues rectified and the ability to have the temperature in the room be monitored within a, about four to five degree parameter for our teachers to, to make them comfortable and our students comfortable. So we're well on our way to that, and we've identified the problems. We're all aware of the problems, we're, we're working on getting them fixed. We have the missing equipment on back order. And again, it should be much better today than it was a couple of weeks ago, and it should continue to get better, and by January, we should have a fully functioning system. A question I, I saw earlier in the month was, when will our playgrounds be done? Again, I'm happy to report all but one playground is complete. That playground is at Shoreview, on the front side, the two-hundred-sixtieth side of Shoreview. And what we are waiting for now is just a rubber insert that requires the ground temperature to be above fifty degrees to be installed. So again, it looks like we're, we're out until spring for this playground. But it's functional, they can use it. It's, it's not exactly what we want it to be. We need to be a little bit careful on it, but they, they can, all the playgrounds in the district are functioning. The parking lots, I saw that as a question a couple of weeks ago, when will our parking lots be done? Again, happy to report all the parking lots are complete, the directional signage is in, and we're, we're moving along, and hopefully the, again, the teachers at Shoreview, it's just ironic that you're here. Hopefully the pickup procedures and drop-off procedures have improved as, as we've completed these parking lots and get the signs installed. Another issue we've had, probably the second most challenging issue, though we were, we were a little bit. most challenging issue, though we, we were, we were a little bit more fortunate in getting this rectified than we were with the heating issues, were the issues with net tech and our, our technology in each of the rooms. This week, Ted Lysak is sending a group of folks out to survey every room. So every room is going to be visited this week and we're going to talk to every teacher and find out what their problems still are. Hopefully those problems are few and far between, but we expect we're going to have some. I would say we're probably 95% complete and everybody's up and running and hopefully everybody's happy and, and learning the technology. I know that Mr. Lysak is also planning a training session, training sessions between now and January, between the breaks, so that everybody, all the teachers and staff will have access to training between now and by the time they leave for break. But I, I can also report that it seems, it's been reported to me anyway, that all of the technology in the cafeteriums are working, the presentation areas. And certainly it was a rush at the last minute for Mr. Bell's first town hall meeting at Bluestone, but the technicians came and they were able to set everything up. I believe that's the case in all four buildings now. Regarding, there, there are some other minor issues, very minor. One would be furniture. We've had some requests for different furniture in the rooms. We've tried to accommodate all of those requests. If, if we've had enough to go around for the entire district, we've certainly accommodated those. There are other requests that we may not be able to accommodate. We, we kind of have what we have. And I can give an example, the kindergarten tables, the kidney-shaped tables, they're awfully big. I, I understand that. It doesn't allow for, for a lot of activities to take place away from the tables. I understand that as well, and I apologize for that. But that's what was specked out. We, we can certainly down the road take a look. But I, I, again, I would recommend that we give it a couple of months and, and see how we can, how the teachers can, can adapt and, and make what they have in their rooms right now work for them. Another issue that is coming up shortly is the commissioning of the buildings. In fact, the electrical and plumbing commissioning is underway. The HVAC systems, again, we, we are waiting until we have final installation of, of those systems, the HVAC system, before the commissioning agents will come out. We expect that commissioning to be done hopefully for the electrical and plumbing by the beginning of the year or so. Pat, is that correct?
Yes, Wednesday.
Wednesday, good. As far as punch lists go, at the end of every project, a punch, the architects go through the buildings and they inspect the buildings and they create what's called a punch list. And a punch list is, are, are there items within the building that are installed but maybe not complete, maybe not done according to spec? And, and the architects go through with, with a pretty fine-tooth comb and they identify these punch list items. They go back to the appropriate contractor and the contractor is charged with completing these punch list items. Once they make a report that these items are complete, the architect will then go back in and, and do a back punch, is what they call it, which is essentially another punch list, saying, no, I'm still not happy with this, this, and this. But in Charton Hills, the architects came up with 969 punch list items, all but 71 have been completed. At Shoreview, I'm sorry, at Arbor, there are 817 punch list items. Again, all but 71 have been completed. Shoreview, there were 980 punch list items, 118 remain open. And at Bluestone, 1153 punch items, out of which 128 remain open. Again, these, these are all items that were identified as the architect as needing attention. But once the attention is given by the appropriate contractor, we'll go back and we'll, we'll still check again and make sure that they were completed to, to the standard there. And, and the last thing I have, in, in week, I'm sorry, month 11, the OSFC conducts a walkthrough to make sure that there are no warranty items missed, that we, we identify any, any issues that we're having in our rooms and, and we identify any warranties that we may have an opportunity to go back to the contractor, the manufacturer and say, hey, this isn't working correctly. So in preparation for that, in April and May, we will, we're going to figure out a way to survey each teacher, whether that be school duty or whether that be in another arena. We will, we will survey every teacher in, in every room in the district and ask them if there are any nagging problems that they've had since the, the building's opened up. And those issues, we will identify those issues. We'll pass those issues on to the OSFC. We'll, we'll, we'll study whether we have reason to, to ask for a warranty for those items, if, if it's within our specs, our specs. So that will be taking, taking place in, in April and May. And that's about all that I have right now. I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Just one thing, I just want to put a thought just for the public. So the whole OSFC is a high school facilities commissioner. And so that's the organization that drives us apart and monitors our, the construction process. I just want to clear on that.
So the people that gave us 41% online for the project. Do we have any questions?
I just want a clarification on a little bit of walkthrough. It's not necessarily from one that's over
Just do a favor, just come to the podium so we can hear.
Yes.
And, uh, Pat, if you don't know, so you know who, who's speaking.
Dennis Kaplan from the OSFC.
Good evening, everybody. A little clarification on a little bit of walkthrough. It really doesn't happen until we actually accept the building or you just, you accept the building. If we have HVAC issues that we see presently, until our system functions properly and is completed 100%, you don't have to accept the building. So at that point, within four little months is when the, when the actual warranty period or the little bit walkthrough would actually transpire. So if these buildings have some issues that need to be fixed, even though they're minor, until you actually accept these buildings, your warranty period will start going forward. So, yeah, just so you know that you're not accepting these buildings with issues that are official stuff.
No, thank you.
I have a question about signs.
Yes.
Do you know about how we, in the process of our building, signs?
The interior or?
Exterior.
The exterior signs, at this point, they should all be installed.
The monument signs.
Oh, the monument signs. The monument signs that were, were still tied up in, in the city right now in regard to an approval process. We, we submitted a design that, what was rejected, that is, is still the process of being redesigned and submitted to the, to the committee of the city.
And I knew that it had been rejected. I just didn't realize that we were taking so long to get them different plans. But I also know that there was talk at that level that maybe adjustments could be made without you having to redesign everything.
That's right.
So where are we then? I mean, are they relooking at the signs or?
We're awaiting word from the city.
Okay. I'm not sure that they know that that's where we are. Okay. Just, you might just touch base with them and say, Kate, where are we? Because there was nothing on the last agenda for them to, to get any action.
Excuse me, ma'am chair, just so I'm, just for clarification, sir. Mr. Higley, so the, we're awaiting the city to be able to tell us that what we have resubmitted is, is accepted? Or are we waiting for them to tell us that the adjustments?
It's, it's actually the architectural review work that we're waiting, waiting for. The city is trying to, to smooth a pathway that would make it a little easier for us to get our current design passed through.
They were what, like six inches too high or something?
There, there were some minor details that, that we need to do.
You know, if you need help, you have to speak up because we have people that need help. Any other questions? Do you also walk through with the architects when they're doing the punch list?
On occasion. I, I know, obviously, I, I haven't been able to walk through on all 2,800 punch items, which is what the total was. But there, we, we definitely, we discussed in court meetings what those punch items are. Pat Ferran, the architects, and Dennis Kaplan are all aware that some, there are some things that may not be on the punch list that we still have concerns about. And those concerns are reviewed in court meetings.
Okay. Obviously, I have not had a chance recently to go around. Do we have the name on Shoreview yet?
Yes, we do.
Do? Okay, good. That's one, a big one. The other one was the backside of Charton Hills with the louvers?
Those, those are not in. Again, that is, that's a delicate issue from, from the standpoint that we believe Miles Mechanical, the contractor, owes us these louvers and Miles is, is contesting that a bit. Go ahead, Dan.
We've been there.
Pat Ferran from PCS.
Uh, there, there's a disagreement right now. I sort of raised the scope between the contractor and all of us collectively on the other side. What they've done temporarily, if they just, in the last week, is put up studs in plywood and tie them to, you know, we closed the building in a temporary fashion, better than it was before. We have told them that, you know, what they've done is not informing, put them on notice. They have committed to us that they have additional information that proves that, you know, if we want something different, that they are within spec. And, and that's one of the issues that we talked about at the HVAC summit. We've been calling it two weeks ago and we're having a follow-up meeting with where we are on all those issues this Thursday. So they're to bring whatever additional documentation they have to that person, maybe for hopefully a final resolution.
I was going to say, they, y'all provided, because you gave them a pure notice, didn't you?
Yes.
Okay. At what timeframe were they supposed to have it?
It was that they had to prove that they've ordered it within 15 days, which just happens to be Thursday. So they've submitted pricing because their position is that it's a, that they're entitled to change or to do it differently because they believe that they're within, you know, the contract documents. So, but we rejected the pricing because we've said that, you know, you owe us this without additional cost. So.
Have you relooked at the specs to make sure that we're on par?
Yes. Yep. They would have to show me something that I have not yet seen at this beyond.
There's two sets of specs that I really wonder, but.
Well, it's, it's more, there's definitely a conflict between the mechanical drawings and the architectural drawings. And so it becomes, well, which overrides which? And they prepared shop drawings for these louvers that had specific sizes on them. It's, it's not a black and white issue. There are some, it can be seen from different perspectives. So.
It could be interpretation issue.
It is an interpretation issue. That said, you know, we, our position was that they had to fix it. If they can show us where they got approval on ones out there from the architect, which the architect just said he did not give, then that would be new information. And based on that new information, we may need to investigate either. This is purely an aesthetic thing. So in fact, the other three schools have this condition that's out there now, much less obvious location.
Did Miles do something else, you said?
Yep.
Did they do all four schools?
No, they only did Charton Hills.
Okay. All righty. What about Downspouts?
That's yours.
I mean.
Oh, this was your meeting. Oh. Downspouts, the Downspout boots are on at Upson, although they are not painted because the spec did not call for them to be painted. So we will be painting them in place. At Charton Hills and at Bluestone, they are here and a color was just selected the other day because they weren't inspected to be painted, so there wasn't color to them. So they got here, we just got what color the architects would like to see and they're being painted in the shop.
Would they be painted the same color as the Downspouts?
Well, you would think so, but the Downspouts are white and since these are cast iron, they are going to rust all the time. And a white painted Downspout will leave streets of rust. So we did not want to paint them white, but it looks like it's still lesser to be. Black would have looked better, but then you would have had a white Downspout, a black boot up against the wall. So that's less than ideal.
I just understand you say somebody didn't take that one for.
Well, so I wasn't inspected to have it painted. So.
Okay. And then Shoreview's?
And it's short, that, no, Shoreview's aren't it. Arbers, they are still on the way. They aren't delivered yet.
What about the grading at Charton Hills in the, on the backside where there's cooling water in several areas?
Um, yeah, that's on, yeah, on the, at Charton Hills.
On the backside where the bus drop off is, in the back later?
The version, you know, out of like, version, shown, it's on there.
Yeah, there's, the, the exterior punch lists were a little, came out a little later than the interior built, just because there's still construction site essentially. So that's on the punch list that will be addressed. But we've had a little difficulty getting new to some of the areas because it's been wet. We're just going to make even more of a mess in some of these areas.
I just, yeah, I remember that the, we had a lot of water standing right where the playground area was. And that's not going to work very well. What about, how are we, and this will be more from the street, how are we, what are you doing on the streetscape on East 260th Street?
We just talked about that before the meeting today. We're going to put that out for bid in January for, when business isn't, that's, that's common for landscapers. But we're going to go with landscaping company and bid that out with them. Remember, we'll get more slow hopefully to let you know.
We make sure that the Euclid landscapers are included?
Absolutely.
All right, I guess that's, yeah.
And then I did drive by today to check the bike racks at Shoreview. Are they in? Because for a while there, the bike, I was driving by at lunchtime and the bikes were being locked up to trees on the tree lawn and up against that fence. I don't know what it's like.
Yeah, it's all, as a landscaping, I think, it's like.
And it's been about two weeks since I drove by in the school, but I'm just curious. It's Monday, I drove by all the bikes, they flipped all the trees and stuff.
Yeah, they, they say they have been installed in the front, so that's good.
And your traffic problems on Shoreview and East 260th have been resolved, do you believe?
We, we still have, occasionally we'll, we'll get residents calling and we, we've installed our, our signage in, in the parking lot. We have spoken with the Euclid Police Department. Our security team has been out there on numerous occasions to, to try to get folks from parking on the side of the street where it says no parking. But that's the big issue that we have right now is that there, there are some people parking where they shouldn't on city streets, pretty much rendering a two-way street a, a one-way path. And we're, we're trying to, we're trying to control that the best we can.
Because I would think as the weather gets worse, that's when the gut works.
It's, it's definitely going to get worse. And the Euclid Police Department has, has offered different operations. I assume we'll, we'll get that under control.
So we just needed a bigger drive-through for parents, I guess?
Well, in, in some cases, maybe.
Thank you.
I have a question about, this is kind of specific, but it was just something that I kind of witnessed, like the functionality of, of like the cubbies and the shelving in the cubbies with the plastic brackets and the fact that when a child goes to play, it will break off, the whole shelf comes out. And there's no way a young child can put the shelf back in. So what, what do you do about things like that that truly aren't functioning the way you would think that they should be? If that's a design problem, who is responsible?
Yeah. Well, certainly we can, we can talk to PCS and that Infinity is, is the contractor who, who was responsible for all the shelving. And, and certainly we can speak with them about that. But ultimately, what may have to happen is that we, we drill a screw or two on each side and, and just small screws to keep it in place. We'll definitely speak with Infinity about that. But again, we're, they are, as are we, bound by the, the spec and the scope of the work. And if it didn't call for those things to be fast and in place, we'll probably have our team.
Yeah, because when you witness something like that, you just wonder the logic. Yeah, because when you witness something like that, you just wonder the logic of the actual shelf.
That's the first I really, so I appreciate it.
I mean, it's kind of interesting to see, like, you just, the whole shelf comes out at like on the kindergarten, and it's kind of odd that it would be checked.
Yeah, we'll look into that. Again, I'll speak with Infinity and if not, we are excited.
I just wonder who is responsible for that situation.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Higley. I have a, just a question about the lead certification process. I'm assuming that we can't go ahead with kind of beginning that process until we have the HVAC and punch list items in place, but do you know what the timetable on that?
I'm not sure. Pat Ferran will, can offer some advice on that.
The lead certification is a multi-step process. First, your design documents have to be submitted. And, you know, just like anything else, sometimes you finally achieve your lead certification well after the project is done. The design phase submission had been submitted and it was reviewed and returned with comments that the architect needed to respond to and either provide additional information or greater detail or something like that. Then there's a construction phase. We get some points for things like, you know, how we procure materials, how far away they come from, how we recycle our construction debris. And all the contractors have submitted documentation specifically, there's a lead section in each prime contract. So we have that documentation as well, and that is turned over to the architect because the architect is really the lead, the lead person for leading. So they are working on submitting the construction phase things and they're also working on the responses to the design phase things. But the last part, we do get additional points for extra commissioning or a greater level of commissioning. So when we get the commissioning reports, that's the, that's sort of the third component to this. So right now, two out of three of the components are in some form of making progress and the third will be once we do the commissioning. Now, we're able to commission the heating system because there's a load on the building right now and it's functioning. We are not able to commission a cooling sign, and this happens often with schools. But we basically have to wait until there's a call for air conditioning and a load on the building. So that part of the commissioning, they'll have to come back, you know, when it gets warm enough. So that'll be an open item for the commissioning agent until it's ready.
Yeah, my understanding of the lead process was that you traditionally just had to wait six months after the building was open to kind of complete some of that stuff, but I just wasn't sure with some of the delays that we've had in getting some of the HVAC included, whether or not we've kind of begun that six-month process or whether or not we hadn't begun that six-month process.
Well, we, I don't really know, I don't really know about the six-month. I mean, I don't know if that's just sort of a-
It's just that timetable that I've heard is commonplace.
Well, I mean, you just explained the difference between the heating system and the air conditioning
system, and that makes sense.
Right.
But again, so it seems like that perhaps the final phase of the lead certification actually has not been delayed, but that's what I was-
No, and we, you know, like in every school's weekly job meeting, there was a section on lead, lead submittals, lead documentation and all those types of things. So it's something we've been working on since day one, really. So, you know, we're in pretty good shape, at least in terms of gathering both the design information and the construction phase information. And now it's just that final component, which is the actual installed performance of the building and those reports that would be the last one.
Mr. Higley, there's questions for you. Have you received as-built documents yet?
They're, they're, they're coming in almost daily. They dropped off a box last week, but yes, they are coming in.
Like, can you show us, get some care of that one upstairs? Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for your chat. Over.
I have sent a resolution to employ law firm of Walter Airfield. This has been requested by our services department to get legal services.
Is there a motion? So ruled by Mr. Smith, second, Mrs. Suter. We used that before, maybe it's been some years, maybe we've used that before.
Yes.
Any other questions, departments?
Mr. Smith, asked to sue her.
Yes.
Stand hold.
Yes.
Mr. Lysick.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
At this time, the board is going to be going into executive session for legal discussion. We will probably not take any action afterwards, so you need to go beyond, appreciate your time. Any other motion to go into executive session?
I'll take a motion that we go into executive session for the purpose of legal matters.
You were by Mrs. Lysick, second, Mrs. Suter. Call the roll, please.
It's a suitor. Stand hold. Stand, Mr. Lysick.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Where's that one? You might have heard it. Stay here. Thank you. Any other questions?